We'll call to order. And we have everybody here. Thomas is not here. He may come. My guess is he comes a distance, and so we may have a traffic issue. And then additions to agenda, the only change is going to be we're adding in donations. Number three, the FFA Alumni Association, it wasn't on your notes. And then like a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So.
I have a motion from Cheryl, the second from Rick. Or Rick and Cheryl?
Yep.
Okay.
Either way.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Carried. Do we have anybody here tonight for public or today, or getting close to evening, for public comment? Okay? Then we're going to move to the consent agenda. Before we get started, I need everybody to understand today this meeting has to be done by six o'clock. So we as a board knows, but so the public also knows. We have in consent agenda, we have the minutes of the January 28th and February 13th meetings. And we all had a chance to look at those. Treasurer's report, so let's go to Cheryl for that.
I went through the bills today, and I didn't find anything outstanding. I did notice that there was a consult fee for the auto course, which was kind of news to me. It means that our auto course has college credit capabilities. And I was thrilled to see that.
Good. Okay, then we have donations tonight. Matt, you were going to maybe mention the first two.
Yeah, there's Roto Choppers donating to our robotics activity account, our robotics team, Your Cause. I already had a question on that. It is also going to a student activity group. I will double check and email that one out, but it's an our student activity donation. And then we have Frida from the Alumni Association and others that's here, so.
Frida, if you'd like to say a few words.
I have two checks here.
Okay.
The microphone.
I have two checks that are from the Painesville area FFA alumni, from the plot that we have in the back of the school. One is for $140 and one is for $200. One is for the $200 is for the well and the sign, and the other one is for the DNR permit for the well. We had a very good year on our plot. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, we'll give you a little recap. I know we're short on time. I'm Karen Johnson. I am the FFI alumni supporter vice president. Frida is our president. We're excited to be here today to share with you the benefits of our plot. So we collected both entry fees and sold the crop harvested from the plot as our income source. So we had a grand total of $9,999.67. So it's a really great number. We were up on yield because we had adequate water this year. You remember, we had really good rain, so we didn't have to use the irrigation system as often as we might have in the past. But commodity prices are struggling, which some of you may be involved and know about. So we look every year to try to figure out how we can, you know, cut expenses, look for donors, because those margins are shrinking for those commodity prices. So we've thrown around an idea of possibly just planting one corn or soybean crop next year. Just logistically, it might be easier to get it planted and harvested. So we as a committee are talking about all of those things, and we're always looking for more donors as it comes to collecting the entry fees. So the seed growers that put their seed varieties in the plot, we collected entry from them. So that's always also about half of our income stream is from that source. So we're always looking for more participants from that avenue as well. So that's a little bit about how it works and some things we're talking about. If you guys have any questions for us.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. We hope to expand, we're talking about some exciting things going on. If we can do a garden or a greenhouse or what have you. So we're always thinking around some ideas. So hope to see and hear from us again in the near future as we introduce those ideas forth to this group.
Sounds great.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And then personnel, Matt, I'm going to just leave you.
Yep, we have a couple of hires. Both of those are, the first one Cindy Anderson is custodian, and the second one is a paraprofessional position. The rest of the ECFE positions, that is the third segment or third installment of ECFE for the year, so that'll be coming up in, I think it's March and April is when that ECFE window will be open. And then just an updated leave of absence from Cheryl Bunkham as well.
Okay, so that is the consent agenda. And we get a motion to approve the consent agenda by me. So I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Do we have a second? I have a second from Maggie. Any further discussion on any of those items? No further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Carried. Then we have communication items. We'll start with Matt on administrative report.
Yeah, so I just, I really just have one item, and that item is lobbying at the Capitol. So it's the new session is now started, and they've announced their dates in which the any new bills would have to be heard in order to start meeting the calendar and what dates they need them on a committee by. So things are progressing. I actually looked at it, I believe on Tuesday, and I think I counted in excess of 30 education bills that are already been introduced in either the House or the Senate. Typically, when we're in the second year of the biennium, that's typically a policy year, not necessarily a funding year. But I've rarely found any policy that doesn't cost some dollars. So the question is, do we ever get dollars in order to implement that policy or not? But I did send out to board members the Schools for Equity and Education Lobby Day. I know MSBA, I think, is working on something. Can't remember if they have put that out or not, but that is coming. And if you can attend any of those, great. By all means, try and coordinate with me. Let me know if you're going to attend. I will certainly be down there at least once or twice, and maybe we'll be down there on the same date. The other two items I want to talk about, we can deal with them in the actual agenda. I want to just talk about we're starting the budget process, so we'll talk about that in the new business items, and then the facility project as well. We'll talk about that in the business. Questions?
Any questions? Okay, and then, so next would be committee reports.
Anything from anyone?
With the technology.
Yeah.
The district of technology meeting yesterday. There's not a lot to report out on. We touched base on the 524 policy, which we will be seeing the second review of tonight. There was discussion around the laptops for teachers and starting a cohort so that teachers are developing their own curriculum, you know, digital, I guess is what you would say. They're looking at potentially taking four years to turn over the entire staff to go through this whole cohort process. I think there's nine to 19 students you're looking at in the summer term doing this. Looking at what else we were discussed. We discussed the Chromebook deployment. Last year, there were some learnings in, at Open House, there was some congestion as students, there was two people handing them out. So just rethinking how strategically they could be dispersed that won't be such congestion at Open House. Those are kind of the bigger things that we touched base on.
Okay, any questions on that?
Anyone else?
Want anything on Wednesday night?
Go ahead if you want to.
Just a real quick one. Wednesday night, we had the meeting with people from the community on the CTE stuff, and it was just exciting. David was there, presented, talked about all the great things that were going on, how a lot of the schools around us were trying to figure out what we were doing, which is a great place to be. Thank you very much, Superintendent, and everybody that's working on these things. And it was a, it was a great meeting. It was just all exciting to see all that was happening. So student representatives, does have anything?
I have a little bit.
Okay.
Well, I have a lot, but not really. I could go on about it, but I won't. So we're kind of struggling right now with like Student Council and NHS with not having advisory groups per se. Like right now, it's pennies for change this week, and normally, we kind of like set a goal for each advisor or whatever. And now we don't have advisor, so we've had to take away like the reward aspect of it. So now it's just like donations, and you can give it to any teacher. And like our Sweet Fest, like we made no money at the dance because people didn't show up. And I don't know, we're just trying to work out a lot of the problems that have kind of arose this year for next year, so we can get like our attendance back up and just figure stuff out in this like transition year.
Okay.
This week is National FFA Week, so our FFA president, she handed out a survey just to all the teachers for doing. And then we do a survey for the kids, and then they like pick a, try to guess the teachers, and they get a prize. So yeah, kind of a fun way to promote FFA.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Can I just offer a suggestion? If there are issues, problems?
Yeah.
Sit down with, you have officers, right?
Yeah.
Sit down and start bringing out what the issues are and what you think the solutions ought to be.
Yeah.
And come up with some concrete ideas.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at right now. We're having an officer meeting coming up like at the end of this week, just to see what everyone's ideas are. And like we've looked at some other schools and how like they do things, and a lot of places do it differently. But yeah, so we're just trying to figure out and then see if that'll work for us, I guess.
Look, it is an opportunity to learn how to do some problem solving.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Then we'll move on. Old business, we have no item sitting there. We are now on two bill, a new business, which is the policy second reading.
So there are three policies in front of you. They're the same three policies that were at the January business meeting. 524 is Internet acceptable use. 524 dot one is our social media policy, and 526 is our hazing prohibition policy. All of these have had some changes from the last version of the policy. Be the recommendation of the policy committee and myself to approve them. They have been posted since our last meeting. We've not had any inquiries or questions regarding those policies.
So do we have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Rick to approve the policy.
May I, may I politely ask if, if I could just have Rick include policy 516 in that motion? 516 was a policy, the student medication policy that was already gone, has already gone through the policy committee. The last time that this board approved that policy, the change to it was that school personnel can now apply sunscreen, which is important. Not maybe today, but it will be in a couple of months. Somehow, when we did the second reading, we inadvertently left policy 516 off of that motion. So it's gone through the process. It's been vetted. It's been changed. But if the, the motion could include 516 along with those other three policies, that would get us.
I will amend the motion to include 516.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate it.
And I remember going through that, and I will second that.
Okay, and we have a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion on the policies? No further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Carried. So then we're on the revised 2019-20 budget. And Matt, we're back to you.
Excuse you, I just got to get to one place here. I apologize.
It's okay. I won't feel like the only one sometimes when I get lost in here.
I'm trying to do two things. I'm not doing either one of them any good. Okay, revised budget. So the attachment that is in the, the agenda is the February revised budget. Just wanted to hit the brakes a little bit and just review the budget cycle. Every year we go through this. By June 30th, by statute, school districts are required to approve a preliminary budget for the upcoming school year. First thing in the fall, typically by October, our auditors are out in the district, and they're checking the books to see if, where we ended up the previous year is what we thought. They're going to verify our account balances as of June 30th or the end of our fiscal year. They come and present in either November or December to the board, and then the board updates the policy after the audit. We roll to winter, and in January or February, you see a revised budget. Now, what this is doing, our beginning fund balances on this attachment, those are all audited fund balances. Those are the numbers that according to our auditors, we started with as of June 30th of 2019. This February revised budget now is taking the current student counts that we have actually had in our school system for the 1920 school year, and that is how we are now projecting our revenues. Typically, the expenditures in the revised budget will remain very close to the same. I don't know that there's a lot of changes in the expenditures, but what you're going to notice is there's a large, there's a discrepancy in the revenues. Our discrepancy in the revenues is a good situation this year because we are up in the neighborhood of about 25 students from where we were budgeting with last spring or last summer when you approved the budget, the preliminary budget. So as you look at this, you can see now with our audited fund balance, our beginning fund balance, what our revenue and expenditures are. Now, one thing I want somebody to just make sure everyone understands is, we are projecting a slight deficit this year of $39,359 in our general fund unassigned. The reason that we're projecting that deficit is because I am transferring out $250,000 from that line item and putting that into our designated for facilities account. And the reason I'm doing that is to make sure that when we get around to talking about indoor air quality project and something like that, we have some options available to us. If we leave that $250,000 in our general unassigned line item, we would be sitting roughly with about a $210,000 budget surplus this year. That $210,000 is directly correlated with the increase in enrollment. Okay? The rest of this looks pretty much standard as it has in the past. The one item that you will notice down at the bottom, if you look at Fund Six, Fund Six is our construction fund, and this is a restricted account. So there are very scripted expenditures in which we can spend out of Fund Six. This is where our bond proceeds from August 19th, August 13th are residing. So you can see we deposited $16,031,140 in there, and you can see what the activity's been up to this point and where our standing balance is. That fund after this year is going to show zero revenue. So as we move forward, just be prepared for Fund Six to really be upside down. It's going to show a huge deficit every year, but that's because it's a one-time revenue dump, and then we're slowly withdrawing money out of that, that account. Okay? Questions at all on the revised budget? All in all, it's very good news. It's in a position where school districts want to be versus being on the other side of the fence, being in a position where you maybe don't want to be, and you have some urgent plans that need to be taken.
Okay, so we would be looking for a motion to approve the revised 2019-20 budget as presented. Do we have a motion?
Can I ask a question first?
Yep.
So just in regards to the general fund with projecting potentially the $39,000, you feel comfortable in, I mean, just so that there could be conversation.
Yep, good question. So our fund balance policy requires an 8% fund balance, general unassigned fund balance. That represents somewhere in the neighborhood of about $1.2 million, $1.3 million. Even with this $39,000 deficit, we're still at just over $1.8 million. So we are still at board policy. We're exceeding board policy. I actually am very comfortable. I think that $1.8 million is a good number to, to be around. And to be honest with you, that's what drove me coming to the number of 250 is because that's what kept us right at about that $1.8 million. I would, that's a good spot for us, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion? I'll make the motion that we approve the revised 2019-20 budget as presented. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Maggie. Do we have further discussion? Other questions on it? Okay, no other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Carried. Then we are going to move to the 2021 budget update.
Okay, so now let's look at some projections. If you open up the attachment associated with the 2021 update, now we're taking a 36-month look at the school district budget. 1819, you can see where our revenues and expenditures were, and our fund balance was at about $1.85 million. 1920, we're just taking the revised budget that you just approved. We're plugging in those revenues and expenditures with that difference. You can see that $39,000 deficit brings that fund balance down to $1,809,000. So now we're rolling everything forward. We're going to project out to 2021. We will use some conservative student enrollment projections for that, and then we will apply what we currently know are the funding rules that were put into place by the last legislature for the second year of the biennium. Right now, as we are sitting here today, we're projecting $8.6 million in general fund revenue, and we're right now projecting about $8.46 million in general fund expenditures. That would leave us with roughly $142,000 in a budget surplus. So right now, if everything stayed at is, and we just rolled our business forward a year, that's roughly where we would be, and then you can see where that fund balance would go. It would be in that $1.95 million number. Now, you can look at the math as you look at what changes the revenue. You can see there's some increases there in gen ed aid and levy if we leave our pupil units the same. We do have a decrease in compensatory revenue. So compensatory revenue is directly tied to a school's free and reduced meal rate. It's the demographics of your district is what drives compensatory. As free and reduced percentages climb, compensatory revenue will climb with it. As free and reduced rates decline in a district, compensatory revenue will decline as well.
So I have a question about that.
Yep.
So, and we've talked about this a number of times, but have our demographics shifted? Is there a correlation with a shift in demographics and a decrease, or is it again, and I know we don't, maybe don't know, is there, like why are families not filling this out? Because I mean, that's a significant.
Yep. Yeah, so I, I'm not, I wouldn't say that our numbers say that families aren't filling them out.
Okay.
I think we're getting roughly about the same number of applications.
Okay.
I think we can do better with the number of applications, and can we increase that participation? You know, there is no harm in filling that out, even if you don't qualify. There, it doesn't, there's no impact on, on a person's meal status. So I think we can improve that, and we can kind of do a PR push to really stress that statewide. That outstate, outside the metro, those numbers are contracting a little bit. Now, I haven't looked at it close enough to say that, you know, Painesville's kind of reducing our free and reduced percentage like the statewide number is. But it's bringing a lot of conversation. I was at a superintendent's meeting, oh, this was at the beginning of January, shortly after the holiday break. It was a topic of the conversation was what are schools seeing as far as the participation in free reduced meals and these numbers or percentage of students that are qualifying, and how's that going to long-term impact districts? So yeah, it's an interesting piece. If there's no designated for facility fund transfer, you can see that factors into the revenue side. We would be up about $315,000. When you go to the personnel, we roll our personnel forward. We factor in 2% on salaries benefits. You can see our increase in expenditure. We are anticipating some, a reduction in costs for Central Lakes College courses next year. That number might move between now and final budget, but that's at least where it is right now. So you can kind of see how we're arriving at our expenditures increasing by about $133,000 or so. So that's kind of where things are at, or where we're projecting things to come in for 2021.
Another question.
The moral of this story, this 36-month snapshot that you're looking at, I do not anticipate bringing a list of potential expenditure budget reductions to this body. We will actually be having some discussion about how we could strategically add some other services as we move forward and look to what maybe next year and beyond is going to look like. Maggie, your question?
Another question.
Yep.
So in regards to the justic pupil per unit, you said it's going to be conservative projection. Are you just like going up? I'm curious, is like a three-year average, because we had such a different look last year, are we just going back to prior to this academic year?
No, I, I would, 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 at most aggressively, I would be budgeting like 97% of our pupils. Realistically, we're probably going to budget somewhere in the neighborhood of 95%.
Okay.
But again, I, I want to be able to have this all play out before I make that decision exactly where that, that line is.
I was just curious, because last, this year was different, and so I didn't, it's hard to project.
But one year isn't necessarily a trend either, so you got to be really careful. You can't bank on that.
Right.
I mean, if we start having a couple of years like that, then I think we have some different conversations to have. I think the other piece is, if we have some other markers that are driving that number, then I, I think we have some other ways to prioritize that. You know, the one I always use is if you have a new housing development that goes in, that's going to bring, you know, 120 housing units. Well, that's a different priority than maybe this one-year jump in, in enrollment where we might be getting students from a different type of environment. So, yeah. But one year's not a trend.
No, but it's sure nice to have.
It's better than the alternative.
That's right. That's right. For most of the time I've been on the board, we've been looking at the other direction. And I was just delightful to see that we need it. The greatest thing for me is when we have to pick up additional educators or an additional educator. Yeah, that means we're going the right direction.
It's a good problem to have.
Yep. And we don't need to have a motion on that.
No, that is just information at this point. It should just give the board a sense of where the conversations with the budget will be going. But like I said, the key takeaway is, don't expect in the coming months to have to sit through a list of potential reductions that we're mulling over or anything like that. That's the moral of the story. Okay?
Okay, so then we're going to move to the fill, facility project bid recommendations. Matt, I'm going to turn it right back to you.
Yep, so I'll invite Josh Gogman from UNESCO, SiteLogic.
We'll go by both.
We'll go by either one. So UNESCO is in the process of a name change, and so it'll be SiteLogic moving forward, so you'll respond.
I'll answer to both.
Okay. So Josh, I'll turn it over to you if you want to just walk through the bids.
Yeah, absolutely. So Matt asked me to come tonight and just make recommendations for the upcoming facility project construction contracts. So we've got two projects, if you will, one at the high school, which is the majority of, of the project, and then a boiler replacement at the elementary school. For the high school, we're recommending that the general trades package go to BCI Construction out of Sauk Rapids. The mechanical package would be Weidner's Plumbing and Heating out of St. Cloud. The electrical package would be Augusta Electric out of St. Cloud. And then the temperature controls would be Oil Companies out of Maple Grove. For the elementary school, our recommendations are for the general trades, Bright Pot Construction out of Elrosa. Mechanical, again, is Weidner's. The electrical is Augusta, and then the temperature controls is Oil Company also. So that's kind of where, where we sit with recommendations for those upcoming construction contracts.
Questions at all for Josh regarding the bids or the bid opening or the recommendations?
We had some, our bid tabulation sheets, were these all of the bids that were submitted?
Those were the ones that were submitted, correct.
Okay.
I thought it was very nice what you submitted. You could see real clearly what we were up to here, and it was pretty straightforward. Anything else at this point?
Are these companies that you have worked with before?
UNESCO has worked with these companies in the past, at least the majority of them. I personally have not. But, you know, in going through the bidding process, you know, we do some research just to see that, that these companies have capacity, that they've meet safety and quality standards. So everybody there, we feel very, very good about recommending.
Okay, any other questions?
Josh? So then the, the process is that Josh needs to get out letters of intent to proceed. So the motion here tonight is essentially going to authorize me to sign off on those motion to proceed letters, and then Josh can get those out, and we can get the process going with getting closer to having a shovel on the ground.
I do have a question then.
Yep.
So like just logistically, so when there are change orders or things like that, that's all managed through your team and contracts that you have with them. This is like what This is, like, what the bid is, is the bid? Is that fair?
Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, the bid represents what's in the documents today. Now, as with any project, things change, we find unexpected items, et cetera. So I'm sure there will be changes at some point. The nice thing is with where the bids came in, we do have contingency to buffer some of that if we run into any unexpected situations.
And as I, as, go ahead, Maggie.
No.
As I recall, part of the reason we selected these people was to try and get us away from piles of change order. And their development in initial, which lots of us saw, in design and everything, we spent a lot of time putting this all together with lots of questions from those people that came up here to present to try and avoid most of that. So I'm hopeful that we don't run into it very much, but-
I hope so, too.
Yep. So at this point, we, do we have other questions at this point? We need a motion to approve the recommended bids as presented. If anybody'd like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Cheryl. Do we have a second? I'll be the second, so you have a second from me. Any further discussion? Okay, no further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Carried. Then we have Armory. So Matt, pass it right back to you.
Sure. Okay, so the part of the facility project is also going to be the demolition of the current Armory complex. This, I have been in contact with the United States Department of Education, and my contact person there, they are the ones that actually oversee this property. We do have a deed in place. That deed was entered into, I wanna say, in 2012, and the terms of that deed essentially were, as long as the district used that facility under the terms of the deed, after 30 years, that facility would then be ours in full ownership. So my intent right now, after I contacted the Department of Education and talked through kind of what the process was and what our plan was, what they want us to do is submit a new application. And that application then is going to be indicating that we are gonna demolish both of the buildings, and then how we are actually gonna use the space for educational purposes. So that application is just about in a final form. What I need here tonight is I need a resolution that the board would adopt, that would authorize that change of use. My intention, and the way I have read everything that the feds have shared with me, is we are simply filing for a change of use of this site. We are not in any way applying for a new deed. We would keep this deed that we currently have in full force and in existence, and when 2042 rolls around, we would own that space outright. Simply rather than the original intended use for education that the district communicated in 2012, now we are going to be changing that use due to the facility project. The one thing that I think is important in this whole process, when the district initiated this conversation with the Department of Education, which that started back in 2011, the very first communication that went to the department was that there may be a time in the future, if we have to expand our secondary campus, that we would be requesting to demolish these buildings. And so again, I have reiterated that in the application. I've explained how we are landlocked due to the airport and the no-fly zone to the south of our building, and so it does limit where we can actually expand and what expansion can look like here. So I think we have a decent application. I think in my mind, we should be able to just continue using the deed as is, and we just need the appropriate channels to sign off on it. Ultimately, what will happen with this application is, we will file it with the Department of Education in Washington, DC. They will then put it through their public benefit assessment, and if it comes back that the use that we're applying for is 100% public benefit, then the deed would remain in effect. If it comes back less than 100% public benefit, then potentially the district is gonna need to figure out what that purchase price of the facility would be. To give you an example, back in 2014, there was an appraisal done on the property. And let's just say that this application comes back and it's 90% of the use is to the public benefit. So the 10% that isn't, what the feds would do is then they would take the appraisal and take 10% of the appraisal, and that's the amount that the district would have to pay in order to own the property outright. I'm not saying that that's where it's gonna go. I think there's a very real possibility that we will be able to just file this change of use, and our deed will stay intact as is. But there's no way to get this process going until we get this change of use on the desk down in Washington, DC and let people start working on it. So I need the resolution included in the application, and I would ask for you to pass it. Questions at all?
So we need a motion for this resolution.
I'll make a motion for it.
Okay, I have a motion from Ashley. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Maggie. And do we have any further discussion? I'm gonna just add to discussion here. I think Matt is following exact appropriate on this one. I think he's right. It's gonna work out, and I, I'm 100% on page with this. So it's gonna be nice and clean, I think. We'll see. So I'll, oh, we gotta go to Linda for our votes.
Ashley?
Aye, yes.
Jay?
Aye.
Rick?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Bruce?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor and carried. So then we are reviewing our upcoming meetings, so.
I just have a couple I wanna talk about. So remember Tuesday, March 10th? That again is a, I believe, a township election date, so we need to start at 5:00 PM. We will adjourn that work and learn meeting at 6:00 PM per statute. And then Friday, the 20th of March, is the regional meeting for the Schools for Equity and Education. That's 9:30 AM Kimball Area Schools District Office. And then I wanted to visit, oh, March 17th is a policy committee. That'll be 6:00 PM in my office. And then I wanted to visit with the board about the strategic planning community sessions. So Monday, March 16th is the first community session, and the following Monday after that, the 23rd of March, is the second community session. I guess I just wanna know what is the feeling of the board? Bruce, I would like to potentially have you come and just do an overview to get us started, and kind of talk about the process and what that's gonna look like, and then turn it over, and we will have different district people facilitating the conversations that evening. But those are the two strategic planning community sessions. The only thing I would like, I don't want them to be board meetings, so I would like to avoid having a quorum of the board at those meetings.
So what we probably would do there is, so if I'm gonna be there, I'm one of our seven. If we have, I think we could have two.
Correct.
So if somebody else would like to desire to be there, just let, probably let Matt know or myself, so we have an idea who it would be. We just don't want to break the rules here and have too many of us showing up.
So is the purpose, do you want the boards to be active in those meetings, or more of just listening and-
Yeah, no, I actually, this is a community brainstorming session. I would really like it to really be authentically community, and the school personnel that are gonna be facilitating that are explicitly going to have instructions about what facilitation is versus what participation is. And so, yeah, I think it truly needs to be a community brainstorming session.
And we had discussed in the past, too, that it'll be emphasized why the board is not there, right?
Correct. Yes.
Because some people might wonder-
Right, that's the mindset. It's clear the expectation.
Yep.
That's the reason why we're not there, as opposed to why we should be there.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the last one that's on the upcoming meetings is Tuesday, March 24th. It's our regular business meeting, and we will be back to a 6:00 PM meeting for March 24th.
Then I have another question. So what is the communication plan for these meetings, so that we're reaching?
Yep. So I actually am going to get something in the paper coming up as soon as these are okay, that will go to the newspaper. And then I also am going to have a letter that's gonna just personally invite all of the local businesses that are member of the chamber. I'll be working through the chamber to get that out as well. I know Mary and David will both be having stuff on their parent newsletter. We can get stuff on the webpage, and yeah, all's invited, so it is community.
Okay?
Would we have time on that March 10th meeting to go through the MSB meetings, the conference?
I think so.
Sessions?
Yes.
Because that's an hour meeting again?
Yes. Right now I have two items for March 10th, so I think that will fit.
I definitely forgot.
Okay. Any other questions?
The planning sessions, do you expect they'll be an hour, 'cause I think there's a choir concert.
Yep, so we did this with all employees on in-service day on February 14th, and it ran about an hour and 10 minutes.
Okay.
So I think the community sessions will definitely be probably an hour, maybe even a little underneath an hour.
I think there's, yeah, because I think that would be a great opportunity. We could invite all those parents to come prior to it and say, you'll have time to get to the-
That's at 7:15, isn't it, or something?
7:30. Let me just double check.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, if we're starting that at 6 o'clock, we will be, they will be ready to go and listen to music by 7:10.
On the 16th, I have, yeah, 7:30.
Yep.
The choir concert, yep.
Okay, other questions?
I move the board to now adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion from Jacob to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Carried.